You don't miss that board.
You don't miss that board?
I still get calls about that board.
Hasn't anybody signed it? Either one? Oh, beauty. That's right. We can get out quick. We've got a short agenda, yeah. Well, you already were. I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order, please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the flag of allegiance and posting of colors. We now have our invocation. Gloria, thank you for this day, this opportunity to be here together tonight, provide us wisdom in all decisions that we make, be with us as leaders in the educational community and be with our leaders around the country in events that are occurring around the world, provide them wisdom and guidance. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Would like to thank our musicians tonight, if you'd like to come forward. Normally, we have a group to sing, so really it was outstanding tonight, as I told the superintendent before the meeting started when you were playing, I said, the only bad thing about having them here playing is it makes me wish I was somewhere else, because they're so nice, you know, like I need to be on a beach or somewhere, it's really not. We have a cordless mic here, if you'd like to pass the microphone around, and if they, if the students could let us know, we know it's New Hanover High School, and your name and what grade you're in, would appreciate it.
I'm Cassie, and I'm in 10th grade.
My name's Sam, I'm in 9th grade.
I'm Terrianna, and I'm in 9th, in 10th grade.
I'm Mozzell, and I'm in 10th grade.
I'm Emily, and I'm in the 12th grade.
I'm Shar, I'm Sharley, and I'm in the 9th grade.
I'm Rachel, I'm in the 12th grade.
I'm Cameron, I'm in the 11th grade.
I'm Monte, I'm in the 10th grade.
I'm Adesha, and I'm in the 10th grade.
I'm Lindsay, and I'm in the 11th grade.
I'm Ellis, and I'm in the 10th grade.
I'm Sam, and I'm in the 11th grade.
My name's Joshua McCoy, and I'm in the 12th grade.
My name's Gabe Reed, and I'm in freshman, 9th grade.
I'm Major Devon Mercer, and I'm a senior.
I'm Michael Cassie, I'm 11th grader.
Thank you all very much. Uh, well, they're breaking them down. Yeah, okay. Also want to thank Mr. James McAdams, Principal of New Hanover High School, for being with us tonight, also the Colonel Hafer, is the Colonel here, and also Master Sergeant Jose Denajin, for the color guard, we appreciate that. It's always a pleasure having the Steel Drum Band here with us. Oh, that's right, and the Steel Drum Band instructor, Mr. Tim McCoy, does an outstanding job. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Donald S. please.
Here.
Ned S. Nichols.
Here.
Dennis A. Kavanaugh. Tammy J. Cobal. Here. Lisa B. S. Edward D. Higgins.
Here.
Bruce T. Chubb.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any changes or deletions? Motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. opposed, approved. Item 3 is approval of the minutes. You're gonna do these all at once, or take them individually?
I think we can do them all at once, we've read them carefully.
Is anybody, okay. So approve all at one time. The item A is regular meeting of December 2nd, 2014, and item B is our regular meeting January the 6th, 2015, item C, our special meeting, January the 8th, 2015, item D is our retreat, January the 10th, 2015, and then item E, special meeting, January the 20th, 2015.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they're approved. Next item is recognition of achievement. Got a little confused by the number of different pull pits we got up here tonight. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I am, of course, not Ms. Quattlebaum, she sends her regrets tonight, so I am here as part of the recognition. The first recognition is our American Legion Constitutional Speech Contest. Our first recognition is for Caroline Bunting, a junior at Hoggard. Caroline won the American Legion Constitutional Speech Contest for the North Carolina District 9. Caroline's topic was utilizing our First Amendment rights. Her speech outlined how famous Americans exercised what they saw as their duty to seek constitutional changes, which led to civil rights for minorities, and women, and the right to vote. The contest judges gave Caroline consistently high marks for the content of her presentation and were impressed with her speaking skills. However, Caroline is not able to be with us tonight, but if Dr. Sullivan or any representative from Hoggard High School's here, we'd love to have you come up here and recognize you. I'm certain it was a great speech. Our second recognition tonight is, goes to a team of students from Williston Middle School. A hundred and three teams from across New Hanover County competed over a span of three months to see which team could theoretically invest $100,000. Mary Hazel, $100,000. And have the most financial gains at the end of the competition. 8th grade social studies teacher Britta Clarkson's three-person team from Williston Middle School won first place. I don't believe they're here tonight, but I will state their names, Janiqua McKinney, Damian Fletcher, and Aiden Lenny. Any of those folks are here? I'm sure they're home making money, Mr. Chairman.
Do we know, do we know how much they made?
Did not, but, uh, yeah, they, they're home making money tonight, so, thank you. Next item, item 5, call to the audience, we've had no one sign up, so we'll go to item 6, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendation, appendix A, Dr. Markley.
We have one administrative recommendation, and that is Colby Beamer to be the assistant principal at Holly Shelter Middle School. He is currently serving as an assistant principal at Surrey Central High in Dobson. He previously served as a PE teacher at Sunset Park and at Alderman Elementary School, so he's coming back home. His contract will begin February 11th and be in effect till June 30th of 2017. He received his master's in educational leadership from the American College of Education and a bachelor's degree from UNCW.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's approved.
He's not here tonight.
Oh, well, where is Dobson?
Uh, it's in Surrey County, Stokes County.
Oh, the, up in the mountains.
Up in the mountains, yeah. Danbury.
Couldn't quite figure out where that was.
Near where Pala Mountain is?
Mm-hmm.
Near there.
Okay, item, next item, item 7, Head Start. Item A, Head Start report liaison, I guess that's you, Mr. Higgins.
Yes, well, it's gonna be very brief, because they did not, they had a joint meeting, if you will, with us last month, so they did not have a separate meeting. I did however get notice, it was actually sent to you, but Shannon forwarded me a copy that we have been awarded a grant by the Head Start people for a five-year, a five-year grant. Of course, we have to meet all the criterias, but, uh, so that will be a wonderful experience for us.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody have any questions, or anything for Mr. Higgins?
I do, if, uh, what would the grant enable them to do that they're not doing now?
I should have brought it with me, it...
Just in general?
In general, it, it, it sets out, it does set out guidelines of what, what they have to do with respect, and I was gonna pick it up and bring it, and I do apologize for not doing that, but, I mean, basically, there are benchmarks that, not specific numbers, but more like how well students are prepared, providing instructional materials and such as that for the students that are in the Head Start program. But I'll be happy to, I've got, it's on email, I'll be happy to forward you a copy of the letter that, actually, like I said, it actually came to Don, but I will, I will forward you a, forward everybody a copy.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Item 8, under information, item A, service learning class, then it's B, Dr. Markley.
This is an update on our service learning cla, class at New Hanover High School. If you remember, you guys approved the class last year, I think it was Ms. Eastep who asked them to come back about a year, in a year, and tell us sort of what they've been doing. So I would invite Mr. McAdams and his students and staff.
Thank you, Board of Education. We, uh, we have Mrs. Phelps here, treat her nice, she just had a baby, and she's coming, how long, how old's the baby?
Five weeks.
Five weeks old.
She came back because she loves this service learning class, and she wanted to make sure
she spoke on behalf of the service learning class and not me, so...
Well, thank you again, members of the board, as what, as well as members of the community, for letting us speak about this incredible program. We have a presentation and assets pulling up, I'll just briefly introduce you to our program. So, as Dr. Markley said, this was something that we submitted for approval about a year ago, so we have really saw a need at our school for trying to engage students in a different way of learning and to expand what they are going to do in the future, and so seeing that goal and seeing that need, we developed this program called Honor Service Learning, and so we've been really excited by all the amazing things that we've seen in just a short amount of time, and so we're also going to share how we started this program, what our goals were, what our outcomes of our goals were, and what our goals for the future of this program are. So, like this slide says, I'm Elizabeth Phelps, I'm the teacher of the program, and I also helped to write the curriculum with Whitney Coonrat, another teacher, so if we'll go to the next slide. So the big question we as teachers always ask ourselves is, what do we want our students to learn? Any teacher, whether it's elementary school, middle school, or high school, that's constantly the question we're asking ourselves. It's the question that drives all instruction, all assessments, is what exactly do our, we want our students to learn? So it's a very, very important question. In addition to that question is, who do we want our students to be? Now unfortunately, due to budget cuts, standardized testing, whatever the fill-in-the-blank issue of the day is, we often don't get to ask the set, second question, who do we want our students to be? Even though that's really at the heart of every teacher, I can pretty much guarantee any teacher who goes into teaching has a love and passion for students and wants them to be someone or something in the future. Unfortunately, oftentimes, we stereotype teenagers in high school as being selfish in their own world, and we never give them opportunities to break out of that label. So, Honor Service Learning doesn't say we have to think about one question or the other, it's an and both type of approach. So we're thinking about what do we want our students to learn, and who do they, who do we want them to be? If we go to our next slide, so our mission of Honor Service Learning is making responsible and responsive citizens. So if we continue, so responsible meaning, we want them to be leaders, we want them to be problem solvers, and we want them to be college and career ready. So it's been amazing to watch how our students have transformed into each of those things, especially with college and career readiness. This is a rare chance where students actually get to go out into the field and see what do different jobs look like, what do different passions actually look like in a very hands-on way. And if we continue thinking about responsive citizens, we're thinking about their learning, so we're creating learning that's connected to students' lives, we're evaluating issues from multiple perspectives, so looking at different articles, TED Talks, different issues in the community, state, and the world, from lots of different points of view, and then we're also crafting assessments that demonstrate civic engagement. So we're creating authentic assessments that are connected to students' lives. If we continue, so a lot of you, I know we've, it's been a while since I've been up here talking about service learning, so it's important to create a definition of service learning. So if you look at this diagram up here, it's not just volunteering, it's not just learning about different issues, it's really where community involvement, practical experience, and academic study all intertwine. So it's not just this feel-good moment for students, or an opportunity for them to think that they're better than someone that they're serving, it's really a chance for them to be in the community, to have practical experience, and to connect that to their learning. If we'll continue, in more layman's terms, I think of it when I'm explaining to my students, it's really where your hand, heart, I'm sorry, your head, hand, and heart intertwine, so it's your knowledge, your skills, and your passion. That's really what service learning is all about. If we'll continue, so there's lots of research on this, this is what I did, most of my focus of my research in my undergraduate studies and my masters in, so I won't read all these different studies, there's actually hundreds of studies, this is a new wave in education that's trying to make learning more hands-on, but basically, to summarize the research that you see up here, students who are engaged in service learning are more academically proficient and excel in their other classes, better when they are engaged more in service learning. They also are more reflective in their practice, so they're thinking about their futures, their colleges, their career choices, and they're also more civically engaged, so they're much more likely to have a positive connection to their schools, their communities, and to future political, social, and political changes. If we'll continue, so basically how we formed Honor Service Learning is, first we met as a planning committee, so that was a group of guidance counselors, teachers, and administrators who tried to think about how we could formulate this. So how we crafted it is, students are, take this as an honors class, so we use the block scheduling, so it's an hour and a half class that they take twice a week, and that allows them three days a week to be out in the community, involved in their service. So over the semester, they accrue over 40 hours of community service time. So then we thought about how to select our students, so they actually go through an application process where we look at their GPAs, their attendance, their teacher recommendations, and for some students, an interview process as well. So, we're not cherry picking our students by any means, but we're making sure that they're responsible enough to represent us in the community, community well. And then we built our community partnerships, so last summer, I was pretty much calling or emailing almost every organization in Wilmington, in the Wilmington area, these are just some of the ones that we've developed, so we actually have 21 active, different community partnerships right now, so that means students go to a consistent placement every single week, so that way they're not just getting this one-time episodic experience with service learning, they're seeing continual relationships with the people that they're serving, as well as the people that they're learning from onsite. So these are just some of the ones that we've developed. And if we'll continue, so our goals of the course, obviously, were leadership, we want our students to understand what leadership means and to have hands-on experience with that. We want to express civic responsibility, so we want to have them look at different issues in our community, as well as what it means to be a citizen. We use research to connect to service as an authentic assessment, so what I mean by that, oftentimes, as teachers, and I've done this myself, is we'll have an assignment where it's, where we'll say, write a letter to a politician, or write a letter to President Obama, and then we never send that letter, and we never get a response. Whereas these students, they are making real assessments for real audiences, so they're getting back, feedback from our members of the community about the research that they're doing. We want them to develop professionalism, so our students, once a month, they have to have a professionalism evaluation from their community partnership, evaluating them on their ability to be a volunteer there, so students get opportunities to see what their strengths are and how they can grow. And then college and career readiness, like I said before, service learning gives so many opportunities for students to see what kind of educational and vocational settings they want to pursue in the future. So with leadership, some of the ways that we develop that is through different activities in class, so not only team building exercises, and this is actually a picture from, we went to the ropes course, team building and leadership course at UNCW, so it gave some students some practical experience, harnessing that before they went out to their sites, as well as identifying strengths, so students look at personality and leadership assessments of themselves, and have to identify their strengths and areas that they could potentially grow. And then we also define what does it mean to be a servant leader. If we'll actually go back to the previous slide, so servant leadership's a little bit different, it's not always saying that I'm in charge, and you do this, and you do this, it's looking at how, what's the best for everyone. And then in the field, they get lots of leadership experience as well, obviously, at their volunteer placement sites, they're put into leadership positions where they're responsible, responsible for others, oftentimes, it's children, or they have to make decisions or use their problem-solving and critical thinking skills. And as I mentioned before, professionalism evaluations, they get an opportunity to see where their leadership goes, where they've established that, and where they can continue to grow. So, one of our students who wasn't able to come tonight, this is Essence James, who's a senior at New Hanover, part of their final exam was to put together electronic portfolio in which they showed examples of how they've met each of those goals, as well as their projects throughout the semester. So she, when speaking about leadership, she said, I define leadership as standing up for what you believe in and making a positive change. I used to define leadership as being the most loud, most known, and most in control. This semester, I realized you don't have to be the loudest or most known person to be a leader. As a leader, I realized just because I may not like something doesn't mean I shouldn't do it, which I think we've all seen teenagers throw that tantrum before. There were a few things that I didn't like while volunteering, but by doing what I was told to do made me a better person. That's what being a leader is about, putting your feelings and pride to the side and doing what's right. This is just one example of so many other stories of leadership that we saw this semester from our students. So it's a ma, you know, any parent of a teenager, or a teacher, or anyone who's ever engaged with a teenager, wants to see a leader like Essence is seeing. And if we'll continue, so civic responsibility is obviously a huge goal of this class, so we achieve that by having lots of guest speakers, the picture up here is actually Mayor, Mayor Saffo, who was there, came to our classroom and not only spoke about things that were going on in Wilmington, but also heard from our students. Our students had a, a chance to say problems and issues that they saw in Wilmington and concerns that they had about the future. So we have an eclectic number of guest speakers and readings, so like I said before, we're looking at multiple perspectives, so we're not trying to establish any type of biases, but seeing, okay, how do different political parties address different issues? How do different people around the world address different issues? So we really have a wide spectrum of voices in the classroom. And students get to hash out those voices through class discussions, through different assignments, as well as hands-on activities where it's student-led, where they're finding the information and presenting it to each other. So if we'll continue, another one of our students who wasn't able to come tonight is Steven Chang, and again, this is from his electronic portfolio, he said, I felt like the old me has changed into a more passionate individual who wants to get more involved with work like this. His work was actually at the Joanne Carter Harrison Center, which is an umbrella for many nonprofits. The moments in class truly stood out when we all engaged in activity defining power and how each one of us has the ability to put out the effort to make a change. So really igniting in students that they have the power to make a change is huge, because if we continue to label students as, you're selfish, you only care about yourself, then they're going to live up to those labels. But if we tell students, you have power, you can make a change, you can build a better future for yourself, then they're going to live up to those labels. And if we'll continue, so as I mentioned before, another big goal of ours is having research that's connected to our service, so students presented different research issues connected to their service site, so for example, if one of our students who's going to speak in a minute, she researched different ways that students can engage in healthier habits, because she was a volunteer at Girls on the Run, which is a program that empowers young women to live healthy lives. They created PSAs, or public service announcements, or commercials, so this is an example of one up on the screen, that one of our students made, who was volunteering at Nurish and Sea. So Gavin Campbell, he actually organized an entire food drive competition between us and our big rival, Hoggard, so obviously that ignited a lot of involvement from both schools, and so he was able to get other students interested in this issue of hunger and to participate as well. Students also had the opportunity to write persuasive letters to local politicians, to research organizations and individuals who make positive impacts around the community and the world, and then at the end of the semester, they actually presented their research to their service sites, identifying different ways that they thought that each of these organizations could improve or to expand their practices as well. So it's amazing, you know, seeing these students, how professional they could become once they were given the power and opportunity to do so. And if we'll continue, I would like to introduce Dr. Rick Glosson, I apologize that that is a typo on there, from the Children's Museum to speak about his experience. We had several volunteers last semester and this semester at the Children's Museum, and then we'll have two students who were volunteers and allow them to talk about their experience.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to speak in favor of service learning. We look for the wild moment at the Children's Museum, when children and adults kind of connect, and it's a kind of non, it's a love moment, it's a, it's a great moment when kids learn. And we saw those wild moments with those seniors or juniors from New Hanover High School, these young kids from Gregory, we worked with Beth Branton, and select three kids to work on STEM hands-on activities at the Children's Museum, and these three high school kids and these three elementary, first grade kids, it created some wild moments for... it created some wild moments for each other during the year. And the new group has just shown up this week. They experienced being responsible, they had a chance to let that responsible seed take hold. And they also watched college kids, and interns, and other professionals volunteer also. So it's a beginning for them. And I hope the, the object of throughout their life to serve will continue. We watched them help others, give themselves to others, being a teacher to others, and, and being kind of that parent on the spot even for some of them. I would hope you would continue it, because it's certainly as good as we need as many new creative leaders as we possibly can get in our community. I'd answer any questions if anybody had one.
Do you have any questions?
And I'll also invite you to come take a look. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sophie Curran, and I volunteered at Girls on the Run at Wrightsfield Beach Elementary School last semester. And one thing that I really enjoyed about this class is that it really put me out of my comfort zone. Before, I was very hesitant to take charge, and I was more of an observer. But through this program, through this experience of coaching girls and actually making a positive impact on their life, I really feel like I developed as a leader. And I think that's a vital lesson that I and most of the students with me in that program will carry with us for the rest of our life.
And I'm Elizabeth Pasquale. I'm a senior at New Hanover, and I volunteered with the Special Olympics program. So I got to be a soccer coach and a basketball coach for teams of special needs athletes. My youngest athlete is eight years old, and my oldest is fifty-nine. So it was really cool getting to see all of them work together. And through this class and being able to work with these athletes, I've learned so much. Like Sophie said, she's been stepped out of her comfort zone, and I have too, but in the opposite way. I really like to talk and lead things and hear my voice a lot. And so I've had the opportunity to step back and really watch these athletes grow on their own, and just kind of helping them do their own thing. And it's been amazing to watch as they've grown. I started in September, and we're going off to the state finals for basketball next week. So it's been awesome to watch everyone grow. And this class has just given me an opportunity to learn a lot about myself. I really want to be a teacher when I grow up. And so, being able to work with all these different ages of kids, and people with different disability levels, it's just been a lot for me to be able to grow.
So, I'm so thankful for our two students and Dr. Lawson to speak, but they're just a few voices of the many who have had this opportunity to really think about their futures. And so, thinking about our future for the program, we have some, several goals. This was a great first year, and we're still building this first year. But there's always ways that we want to grow and to improve. So some of those ways are, we want to increase and diversify our community partnerships. So we want to continue to find other partnerships in the community that allow student volunteers. Unfortunately, a lot of places do not accept volunteers that are under eighteen due to liability issues. So we're trying to constantly find different ways that we can match student interests. So how we build those community partnerships is we look at students' interests and their availability level, and their strengths, and then we place those students so that way they're passionate about what they want to do. So we really want to diversify and expand those partnerships, so that way we can have a diverse group of students have their needs met. As well as, we want to help other schools facilitate service learning. So I know several other high schools may be interested in developing this program, so we want to give them the tools and resources to help do that at their school, as well as making service learning a priority at all schools. Having an orientation towards social justice, and towards learning and serving should be a goal for any school in any classroom. And then develop more opportunities for student-led service. So some of our best moments, I would say that a lot of our students had this past year, were moments where they got to identify a need and how to meet it. So we want to try to create as many of those opportunities as possible. So the future is always on the mindset of service learning. We're always thinking about who we want our students to become, and what we want them to learn. And so it's been amazing to watch all of that progress this year, and how we'll continue to inspire students to make the best future for themselves.
I just want to close and say that even with Ms. Phelps being out on maternity leave, she has kept up with the classes, with the substitute. She has talked with them probably daily, and made sure that they were up to par. And the only huge, huge problem we had was not having enough students to fulfill the obligations of the people in our community that want them there. They want volunteers, and that there's, if there's a way we can get more involved, we'll try to do that. But that was our biggest problem of trying to have more students for the people in the community. You have any questions?
Thank you. Board, any questions?
Ms. Phelps, first of all, congratulations. Is it baby Bore?
Yes.
Name James, but it's not after me.
I, I wanted to ask, are these students typically outside the LICM program? Are they ones that are included in that?
We have both students who are in the LICM program, so we offer it at the end of the day, so that students who are in the LICM program can be engaged with it. But this semester, we had a lot more students who were outside of the LICM program join, which is great for, I think, both parties to have these opportunities where they can expand their learning.
Excellent presentation.
Oh, thank you. Is there any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Are you finding, through the experience and talking with the students, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Are you finding that it has changed decisions for the kids as far as where they want to go, or what they want to be beyond that?
Oh my goodness, yes. I could probably talk the rest of the night. To answer that question, I'll tell you two quick stories about some students who had those change of decisions. One was a student who, she wanted to study marine biology. So she's very passionate about that. So we had her volunteer at the aquarium, which has an awesome volunteer program there. So she starts volunteering there, and she's talking to these college students from UNCW about their marine biology program. And she's hearing all the different classes they're going to take and things like that, and she realizes, "This is not for me. I do not want to be a part of this. This is not what I want to do." And so, you know, she had that, finally, that moment of realizing that this path that she thought for so many years she wants to pursue actually wasn't for her. So this semester, she's actually in a partnership with a nonprofit called Hack United, which is a program, it's a business where they sell clothes and different lifestyle items, and give half their proceeds to students in New Hanover County, as well as students around the world, meals through their, half of their profits, which is their title, Hack United. So now she's partnering with them and realizing that she actually wants to pursue something with hunger in her future. And then the second story I'll tell is actually a student who thought that she wanted to study engineering. And so, she was very good at math and science, and had so many strengths with that. But she also really loved student, working with students with special needs. And so she was actually working with Coastal Therapeutic Riding Program. And a horse stepped on her foot. And so she was no longer able to help with that. And so we actually had her start tutoring a class of students with special needs. And through that, she was able to see, "This is a strength of mine. I'm able to articulate these different math concepts to these students, and now she wants to be a special educator." So we've really seen, and those are just two stories of countless other stories where we're seeing students really make decisions about where they want to go to school, and possible career choices for themselves as well. Are there any other questions?
Ms. Phelps, yes. The initial list of readings that, that we had, are you still using those, or have you expanded on that?
Yeah. So I believe I emailed earlier this school year, different readings that we've been utilizing, and we've definitely expanded that as well. So we have lots of different voices in the classroom, because I think that's really important for our students to see that there's multiple perspectives, and oftentimes multiple solutions to different problems. So we've had from everything, from Eric Liu, who's a Republican voice. He is the head of the Citizenship Academy, talking about his views and things like that, all the way over to different TED Talks, Newsweek, lots of different voices within that. So we're really trying to allow students to see that there are different ways that you can look at an issue, and then allow them to make decisions on how would you apply those different perspectives to your service, and what would you do in these different situations as well.
Right. And, and, you know, I did read through, I think there were maybe ten or so. There were a couple that I, that I had some concerns about. But, you know, you talk about the leadership. I was glad to hear you say, you know, "This isn't just a feel-good moment for the kids. This has really got to be about serving others' needs." And so, you know, in, in reading some of the statements that you had sent us when you did your update letter, some of the kids had, you know, it seemed to be that they were focused on how it made them feel, and not so much, you know, the work that they're doing, and how important that was. So when you talk about leadership, I, I would like to see some diversity in your, in your reading. So if you've got an updated list, if you wouldn't mind sending me that, that would be great. I'd love to see that. Because it's not just, you know, when we're talking about hunger issues, or, or things like that in the community, it's not, it's important to understand and to learn about the core causes, and not so much, you know, addressing, addressing the issue from a Band-Aid standpoint. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's definitely, because we have those readings, and those are just a jumping point for our students. And when we're looking at those readings, we're also not just saying, "This is the only way to do something," or "This is the only perspective on it." We try to say, "Is this person really right? Is this person the way to handle this, or do they have it together?" And then, like I said, with the authentic assessment, our students are doing research about the core causes of these different issues that they're seeing at their service sites. And the service sites have also provided a lot of resources as well, to say, you know, for example, Nurish and See, they have given some of our students resources on why there's so much hunger in Wilmington. As well as Mayor Sappho, several of our guest speakers. The Blue Ribbon Commission has been a great partner of ours to try to show issues in Wilmington, and where some of those issues might have stemmed from. And so that's definitely, I completely am on the same page as you, you know, not just saying what maybe they've heard their whole lives about hunger, racism, poverty, different things like that. We're really looking at the roots of those problems. So I'd love to send you an updated list as well.
That would be wonderful. And I, I would like an opportunity maybe to read some of their research presentations, if you, I don't know if any of the other board members would, but I would love to, to kind of hear what they're, or read their thoughts after they've done their research.
Yeah, definitely. Most of the presentations were oral presentations that they made, but I can definitely send you the notes that they've gathered through that.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you again so much for allowing us to update you on this program. Again, I could talk for probably the rest of this meeting about all the amazing steps and ways that we've seen our students grow over this semester. So I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for being here. Item B, adjustment to attendance zone. Opinion C, Mr. Hance.
This will probably be the easiest attendance zone adjustment we'll ever make.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you know, we are continuing to grow in the county, and so we continually look at our attendance zones, and from the perspective of any adjustments that might need to be made, and as minor adjustments as, as we deem possible. Can you get it up, Don? We are recommending tonight, and this is for information only, but we're recommending that we move a study area, study area number two thirty-six. And you have maps at your, at your place as well, and we'll see it on the screen in just a minute. But study area two thirty-six belongs to the Alderman Attendance Zone.
Current, for Pine Valley.
No, it belongs to the, that's right, it belongs to Pine Valley Attendance Zone currently. We are recommending that it be moved to the Alderman Attendance Zone. And Alderman has currently about fifty-one slots in their, in their school for students. They're under capacity, whereas Pine Valley is about eighteen over as of the fourth month's student count. However, the construction in the area around Alderman is, is growing, and particularly in the area of, study area number two thirty-six. And so we are recommending that we move two thirty-six to the Alderman Attendance Zone, from the Pine Valley Attendance Zone. There are currently zero students in that Attendance Zone now, so there is no impact on students at all, and require no student movement.
So it's your expectation that that area that's now undeveloped behind where the hospital has rented the old PPD buildings and everything, is soon to be developed as residential, whether it be commercial?
We think that there will be some residential, there are some residential areas going up in there now. There are, there's some construction along that part right now.
They're across the street.
You're right. And we will, we do expect there to be some, some construction there in the future, and some growth in that area.
That's one of the larger undeveloped areas right now in that part, in that section, so.
Well, I mean, and I, I agree. It's always well. It's kind of like when we did the land down on, on River Road. Go ahead and do it before anybody's in there. And then if they move in, they, they know where, you know, where they're supposed to be going to school. So I, I.
And those apartments right, I've met with Bob today, and the apartments right next to them started leasing Saturday.
Okay.
So it'll be interesting to see also if we pull some students out of, out of those.
It'll be interesting, because I think they're one, two, and three-bedroom apartments.
They are. And it'll be interesting to see how it, how it all plays out, and how it actually grows, but.
Yeah, if you drive them down in that corner, they're building all over the place down there.
Building over next to the museum.
So we're recommending that we go ahead and move two thirty-six into Alderman, from Pine Valley.
I see this is for information.
Yeah, just for information.
This is just for information only.
Yeah, doesn't require board action, because I have given me the authority to tweak lines.
Okay, you're just telling them.
We're just informing you that this will happen.
In case one of the non-students calls you.
Yes, we appreciate you moving forward with it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Item nine, under Superintendent's report, item A, process for naming the new elementary school located in the northeast.
All right, as you are aware, we put out the request for name suggestions. They tended to fall into two categories, basically either persons or geographical areas. What I'd like to get from the board tonight is a consensus as to which direction we'd like to go, names, or personnel, or geographic. And then once you tell me that, you, I sent you a list of what were the top suggestions, and then we could just simply take those top ten, I think, or top five that were there, and just do some kind of vote, or recommendation off of those top five. So I'd ask the chair maybe to get a consensus. Do we want to go with a name, or with a, or the geographical list?
Well, I for one would support a geographical.
And so would I. There, there were so many deserving people that were recommended. It would be very hard. So I would go with it.
We'd almost have to develop some sort of criteria that would quantify someone's contribution in order to, to.
Justify.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we kind of got away from, you know, with Holly Shelter, Holly Shelter Road, Castle Hain Elementary.
We used to have a requirement that they be deceased, and then when we did Federates Park, because Murray was still alive, they took the deceased out of it, and so.
Yeah. So given that then, I will send you in the.
Well, let's see, Lisa, will you?
I already told him I want to.
Geographic, geographic.
So I, just as a reminder, then I'll send you a list that I think was a top ten. And if you would think about that, and at your, at our next board meeting, we'll have you vote for maybe your top five, and we'll just use that as a way to narrow it down. Does that work for everybody? All right.
Okay. Item B, upgrades to the sound system and scoreboard at Legion Stadium.
All right. Amy Beatty, who works for Wilmington, has been, asked us about possible upgrades to the stadium. And she sent a follow-up email today, which I've included at your desk in front of you, where she has the final, the more updated figures. As she says, she's updated on the cost of replacing the sound system and scoreboard. The quote is eighty-one thousand dollars. Still waiting to hear about the installation cost associated with that. And the scoreboard price increased from the estimate the city received in November, which we had, which we had talked about at seventy-five thousand. And so she has a meeting with another donor that might reduce our, any potential share that we would have in that. Traditionally, we've been a one-third partner in whatever's happened at Legion Stadium. She sent me the actual quotes, which are attached. She also said there is a possibility with this sign, uh, that, as you go, if you look on the picture page, which is the third staple page, that there are some electronic, uh, capabilities that you could actually sell advertising during the game, uh, that you're, that you're doing. So what she, what she needs from us is, are we interested in, in, in being a one-third partner in this upgrade? We won't, can formally approve it until we have an actual dollar figure.
Well, I would just like to say that Mrs. Neckless and I serve on the Legion Stadium Commission. And, uh.
On the 17th.
We've got, on the 17th this month, we have our first meeting. It'll be her first meeting. I've been on the Legion Stadium Commission Committee for years. And one of the main reasons I have wanted to stay on that committee is, uh, to be perfectly blunt about it is, uh, Mr. McAdams, I'm looking out for New Hanover High School.
And I will be too.
And Ms. Neckless will be too. And then Mr. Higgins, cause you've served on it, I think. Dr. Hickey served on there. Because to me, and, and I tried some years ago when, uh, we split the cost of the artificial turf at Legion Stadium. It, the, it didn't, the amount was not as great as they thought initially. So there was, it, it, the one-third was not as big as we thought. What I tried to get them to do then was go ahead and do what we're, want to do now to have done it then. Because a company came out there and put up a system down there under the current scoreboard. And the committee and everyone went down to the other end of the field, outside of the stadium, on that far end to the right. And they fired that thing up and it was amazing. I mean, played music and did it, and you could understand every word. Cause what's there now, I don't know how many of you attend things at Legion Stadium.
It is not.
You know someone is speaking, but you can't understand what they're saying. It's just terrible. Uh, so I, I would strongly support this and, and hope that we can. I don't know who the donor is.
And it's not $32 million Texas A&amp;M's getting ready to spend on their school board.
Uh, but, uh, but I tried to get them to go ahead and move forward then, but the, uh, uh, for whatever reason, they, they did not. But I think it's something that's needed. I particularly like the aspect of maybe the advertising on there with the scrolling across of, uh, companies and, and can generate revenue. And that would go to New Hanover High School also, because, you know, as people know, we spend less than 1% of our money on our athletic budgets. And I think it could certainly be a benefit to, uh, to help out in many ways.
First off, it's a way to possibly recoup, I mean, I would, you know, New Hanover, but, you know, we got to pay for this thing. So it's a way to help partially recoup maybe some of the costs.
Well, I'm looking forward to the meeting because there are other entities involved. You know, the county, the city, the school board, but then also those that use the stadium.
Sure.
And I always get them mixed up. Is it the?
The Deesels, the football team.
Yeah, the, the soccer.
And the Hammerheads.
And the Hammerheads, yes.
Uh, and I know they're, they're, they'll benefit from this also because the, what they talked about some time back with the scoreboard was it'd be a modern type that, and I don't know the difference between a soccer scoreboard and a football, but evidently it could do that. It could display the soccer information.
Soccer counts, uh, up instead of counting down. Uh, it runs on a, you got a 40-minute half, so traditionally you go from zero to 40. And like a football game would start at 15 and get down to zero. Extended time, you never. Yeah, cause it doesn't mean anything.
Cause they have extended time.
Cause they have added time. We actually play the entire 40 minutes though. We don't play half, half a quarter and just stand there.
But the scoreboard would show that. So, yeah.
What I, what I need from you guys is a consensus, just not a, not an actual approval, but are we interested in being part of this? And once we have a dollar figure, then I could, we could put it on an agenda item?
I, I would rather see, um, I don't know who this, who this donor is, who this sort of nameless, faceless person is who's willing to put up some money but not willing to tell us how much. I would rather see what they're willing to put up first. Because what we're, what we're talking about is $25,000 roughly. Um, and, you know, we, we just, what, what was it we just, uh, spent? We, we upgraded a ball field or something along those lines? What, what did we do?
Baseball stadium.
The stadium.
I think that was 300.
300,000?
But we didn't have to pay a third of that, I don't think. Didn't, didn't the owners of the, uh, they paid a sizable portion. We only paid like part of like 85.
Let's also keep in mind that Ashley, Lady, and Hogard, when those teams want to practice or they want to do something, they step right outside of their school and they do it. Hanover has to go out, get on a bus and go somewhere. And I think that any money that's spent at Legion Stadium is just like we had a problem, say, at Laney Stadium or, or Ashley or whatever, that, that, you know, we're, uh, well, we're trying to upgrade and keep it a, a number one facility. So, uh, it's, I think we do share the responsibility of, uh, of helping with the things because it's, it's helping New Hanover High School and their athletic program.
Mr. Hayes, if I may, just for clarification on the agreement for the improvements to Harley Field.
Baseball field. As I recall, the Wilmington Sharks team paid 50%.
Okay.
And the other 50% was split one-third, one-third, one-third between school board, city, and county. But the, so we ended up paying something like a.
50,000 or something?
No, it wasn't that much. Well, yeah, it was about 40,000. I can't remember the exact amount. But we paid something less than 25% of the total cost.
Well, I would, I would be in favor of exploring it.
Cause we don't know, we don't have a dollar figure at this time.
Well, and, and because there is a, a potential for, um, to recoup the cost, uh, I don't see why the city can't purchase it and use it for their own advertising and recoup the cost that way.
I, I think when we go to the meeting on the 17th, we will be able to find out more and we'll certainly offer your suggestions and your concerns and, um.
They might have a better idea of this type of system used somewhere else, maybe in any similar type of market, what it's generated, you know, how, how they have, have they benefited from having that? Which would help us, I think, make a decision. But I personally would, would welcome the opportunity to, to, to work with them, you know, if at all possible. We don't have a figure yet, but I think that's all you want to know, isn't it, is?
Yeah. She wanted to know where we were and I said I would bring it to you folks tonight.
Well, now she said 81,000 rounded, but this, this quote is much less than that. Is this just a piece of it?
81,000 is the cost. There's still an installation cost. The 75,000 you see in the email was her original estimate back from November.
With installation?
No.
No, it's 81,000 plus install, or the cost to set it up.
Right. But I'm saying that the, the quote I have behind it only has 29,000. So where's the 81 coming from? Is there, is there more to it?
That's what's, that's what she sent me today.
Okay.
So those may be some of the add-ons, possibilities.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
You've, you've got everything I've got.
I think what you're hearing is there's interest, but the devil's in the details.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I would tell her there is interest, but we need to see a dollar, the actual dollar amount so we can put that on the agenda.
And then Ms. Neckless and I will know more after our meeting.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to know how much this donor is willing to put up first, because that's really.
Might have a figure.
Mm-hmm. That's really gonna make a difference.
Might run up another donor or something. Who knows?
Quite a few, we need.
Any other questions on that? All right. Item 10, under consensus items, item A, budget amendments, opinion C, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend approval and I've, I've prepared a summary chart for you, um, summarizing the, each of the amendments. And we'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions, comments?
I guess we need to move for approval.
Yep. Need a motion to approve.
Okay. Need a second, Mr. Higgins?
Oh, second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item B, personnel, opinion C, Dr. Welmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, approved. Thank you. Item C, change of school assignment, opinion C, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, a request that you, uh, release this student, um, based on the fact that his parents are employed with a district that's affluent without.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item 11, old business, item A, local control of school calendars resolution, opinion G, Mr. Bullard.
Last week, there were two different drafts that were proposed for this resolution, uh, which would ask the General Assembly to grant additional local control to school boards regarding your school calendar. The consensus of the board seemed to be that draft B was preferable. So this is draft B again presented to the board for its consideration.
I move we approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Questions, comments?
Does he need to read this into the record or sometimes we have, sometimes we haven't.
I think it's the discretion of the chair or the board as to whether to read it or not.
How did you let Mr. Bullard just summarize what it is? That's a lot to read.
Well, it is a lot to read. There's a lot of wheres is there. Would you just like to summarize, Mr. Bullard, the, uh?
Right now, the, the legislature, um, allows local school systems to set the calendar, which means the starting and ending dates and how many school days there are and things like that. But the legislature has put a lot of restrictions that hamper the flexibility of local systems. They set a date, um, by which, uh, the, the school can't begin after a certain date and it has to end before a certain date in June. Uh, they mandate certain vacation days, certain teacher workdays. Um, and it gets to the point where the local systems really don't have a lot of flexibility to fit within those requirements. So the intent of this resolution would be to ask the legislature to grant additional discretion to each local school system across the state so that you can better fit your school calendar to your own needs.
Which is the way it used to be. Uh, and there, and there were problems, there were concerns, uh, from around the state at various, uh, districts. Cause I think that's another reason this is good in that it allows those districts with, with problems maybe that others do not have, they can address. Whereas others don't have that problem, so they wouldn't have that concern. Any other questions or? Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Uh, item 12, under new business, item A, solution tree source resolution, opinion C, Ms. Brinson.
Request that the board approve the solution tree sole source resolution for, um, TLC training, at-work training for 75 participants.
Move for approval. Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, it's approved. Item B, surplus, opinion C, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Request that the board approve the surplus list. These are items that are no longer of use or, um, value to the school system.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Take Mrs. Tan, Net, uh, Ms. Cobble.
Did I beat him or did he get me?
No, you, you got it.
I'm not sure on that.
Let's roll the tape.
I think I heard his voice first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved.
Interesting some of the stuff that's on here.
It is.
I hate any salt pants.
How detailed the list is.
All right. Item 12 is call to the audience for non-agenda items. We had no one sign up, so we'll move to item 14. Uh, we need a, a motion to go into closed session. Mr. Bullard, will you state the reference?
I believe it's for personnel, if I'm not mistaken, which will be 143-318.11A, subsection 6.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are in closed session.